Good evening. It is October 20, 2022. The time is 5:30 PM, Monday. We're at 10 West State Street, which happens to be the City Council chambers and here for a regular city council meeting. I have to read this proviso and call to order as follows: that the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. You have to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less so others may be given a similar opportunity. Speak clearly and direct your comments to the mayor and council in general and not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discussion of the mayor and council to respond to questions and comments or have staff respond. Will those who are able, please join us through the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Very good. Time for mayor, council, and administrative comments. Does anybody on the council have any comments to make tonight?
I'd like to make a quick comment, Your Honor.
Go for it.
So I was lucky enough to go onto the live onstage event last week, and it was tremendous. So if you don't have tickets or you're looking for a fun night of entertainment, I definitely look into their spring concert series. But I was really impressed with the Atlantic City Boys. My wife and I had a great time. My parents had a great time. I think everybody did.
Very good. Anyone else? Madam Administrator?
None, Your Honor.
I'd just like to quickly maybe repeat—no, I didn't. This would not be a repeat of the open house of the Marshawn area, the Marshawn Arts and Civic Center, which is a redo of what was known as the Fisher Community Center. I do know the Fisher family. In fact, many of them were in town this last week for the Marshawn Thai Foundation. They are happy to have the name changed. It's already the Fisher Gallery when you walk in there. But that facility is just wonderful, and they had a chamber lunch in there the other day. It's got a commercial kitchen. It's a really nice place to have that art so well preserved. And then another fun thing earlier this week was to go out to the new center associates building. So the mental health now is being cared for outright next to the new hospital, next to the newly remodeled college. And that facility is really engaging, pretty, and a nice setting with lots of natural light. And I was impressed by what they were able to do out there. With that said, let's go on, and I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda. But Councilor Thompson would like to pull numbers seven, nine, 12, and 14 from that consent agenda. With those to be talked about afterwards, does anybody move for approval?
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Let's take a vote first, and then we'll have our clerk read them.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That carried, and then let's take up number seven. What is that?
Read.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Approve the minutes for the October 10, 2022, meeting. The bill is the amount of $2,66,945.40. Approve liquor license renewals for TC at 921 North Third Avenue. Supermarket Villa Chihuahua at 107 North Center Street. Opa Grill at 4 West Boone Street. Oliver Bean Designs at 1714 South Center Street, number B2. Approve the civil service hire list for the park maintenance worker and police officer. Approve June 2022 financial statements. Approve July 2022 financial statements. Receive the building permit report for September 2022. Resolution 2022-279 approving an agreement for tobacco enforcement services between the city of Marshalltown, Iowa and the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division, State of Iowa, created pursuant to Chapter 28E.12 of the Iowa Code. Resolution 2022-281 approving contract change order number two for the Creekside Estates addition project, number ECO 21006, a decrease of $36,076.45. Resolution 2022-282 approving engineer statement of completion and accepting CRO Delorio Inc. 18th Avenue Bridge being project number STR 20004. Resolution 2022-284 transferring funds for fiscal year 2022 through June 30 of 2022. Resolution 2022-286 approving engineer statement of completion and accepting contract for Creekside Estates being project number ECO 21004. Resolution 2022-287 accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2022 CAT 926M wheel loader from Ziegler CAT for use in the street department and declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing the sale and disposal thereof of a 2000 Caterpillar 938G wheel loader.
Very good. Thank you. What is number seven, in case somebody wants to move to approve it?
Resolution 2022-278 waiving conflict of interest relating to Ayers &amp; Cooney's PCs representation for the Marshalltown Community School District related to the lease for Arnold Park.
Is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
Your Honor, I can make this real easy for the first three. Seven, nine, and 12, I was asked by a citizen to pull those. That person would like to make comments on those. I have nothing for the three of those, but I do on 14.
Anybody else up here have any comments? Otherwise, we'll open the mic to the public. Mic is open.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. We really don't need to have this resolution. We don't need a waiver. According to Goal 3, Objective 5, maintaining a financially healthy organization, we should not be leasing this park. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried. Number nine, what is that one?
Resolution 2022-280 approving the assignment of real estate purchase agreement and lease agreement for 23 West Main Street to Regulato's Realty Corp.
Assume the same thing is true with Mr. Thompson. Anybody up here want to address it first before the mic—oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we do, don't we?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Can you tell I'm rushing a little bit? Is there a second?
Second.
I have to be on Fort Dodge tonight. Let's have discussion up here by the council. Let's have discussion by the public.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. The fiduciary duty of the council is to protect the taxpayer from undue liability or harm. Purchasing with a quick claim deed subjects the taxpayer to potential liabilities. We know this. We've discussed this. When the city sells property under a quick claim deed, why is it not a warranty deed?
Any other public comment? Roll call.
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
That carried. On to number 12. I'll read that, and I'll try to remember. They asked for a motion.
Resolution 2022-283 approving the city fee schedule.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any council discussion?
Your Honor, before the person approaches, I just have one question. I was told, and I don't know if it was Heather's predecessor or not, but those charging stations were credit card activated? I did not know that was free electricity.
Yes, they were not set up initially when they were installed to be charging, and that is what we're proposing tonight with the city fee schedule. So I think there were some unknowns in terms of how that agreement was set up and signed with ChargePoint.
So everybody that's been charging up till now has gotten free electricity?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other council comment before the mic is open to the public? The mic is open to the public.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. According to the CA's report to the council on a daily basis in the last 90 days, we have had 13 days where there have been more than two unique driver cards. That means 77 of the 90 days, there was only two cars charging there. They leave their cars there for almost all day. Who would do that? Someone who lives downtown or works downtown. So they've been using this equipment for free. I don't think there should be a grace period. Everybody with electric cars got a smartphone, and they've got an app that tells them when it should be full, and they can go get it when it's full. They don't need a grace period. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried as well. And the last one that we pulled is number 14. What's that?
Resolution 2022-285 declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing disposal thereof from the Public Works Division.
Entertainer motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion by council.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I just want to know—I was informed that two of these items don't even exist anymore, but we're just cleaning up some paperwork. I want to know who gets the credit for finally looking these up and finding out how to clean up our records. So I just wanted to pull this to see who I thank, and wondering if we need to have annual inventory of our equipment. Thank you, Your Honor.
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. The two items that you're referring to that have previously been disposed of through trade-in or a sale would be the Transit Division's bus and the motor grader in the Streets Department. So that'd be Kevin and Rick Legg.
Please tell them thank you for me.
Will do.
Any public comment? Okay. That would call for roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried as well. On to item G resolutions. What's our first one of those?
Resolution 2022-288 accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum Generator Project, number COL 22001, in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of $209,920.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any council comments or questions about it?
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried too. Number two out of seven.
Resolution 2022-289 approving professional services agreement for the Automated Traffic Enforcement Services with Census-Gatsu Group.
Floor is open for motion.
For approval.
Thank you. There is a second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion on this one.
I've got some questions, Your Honor.
You bet.
So I don't intend to be voting for this tonight. I do have some questions about, you know, the privacy and other things with this arrangement. Do we have a privacy policy from this company?
Chris Jones, Captain Operational Services for the Police Department. Right now, all we have is an RFP. So where we're moving forward today is acceptance from the council to actually go into contract negotiations. There are several different items that will be addressed. Safety and security obviously would be one of them. The long-term implications of any legislative changes in automated enforcement will be other things that we'll cover, along with cost and infrastructure changes and as such.
Okay. Thanks. Could you make sure that, you know, we find out how long is the data stored, where it's physically stored, the—you know, just the retention time? If they get warrants for that information or voluntary—if they give the information voluntary to appropriate agencies, do we get any notification of that? Those are some of the questions I'd like to hear as we go through this process.
I will contact them if we go through with the process.
Just one thought to that, which is contrary to the resolution in the packet, but was something that was brought up to me earlier by another council member, is that we have getting direction to go into negotiations and have the mayor execute the contract, which means we typically wouldn't bring that back, I think because there are questions about the contents of that contract. And that's unknown at this point, that I would recommend that we bring it back to council for approval once fully negotiated.
And Census-Gatsu would be more than willing to come and give a presentation to the council if you choose, and maybe be able to answer more of the technical questions directly, if that would make you feel better.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, would that come back as a resolution, then?
Yes, it would come back as a resolution.
And then, Chris, I know you guys put a lot of work into this and, you know, did a lot of research, but remind me what the split will be. I mean, obviously, there's no cost to us. They're installing everything. But on the tickets generated, what's the split? Is that known yet, or is that negotiated in the contract?
It's semi-negotiated. So the proposal from Census-Gatsu was $35 per ticket. And depending on how the city council would choose to administer those fees, it would be $35. We received—the four proposals, they ranged anywhere from 20 to $35, with the quality of service that Census-Gatsu is and their stability in Iowa and other communities in Iowa with ongoing programs that are similar to what we want to establish. $35 was reasonable.
And that's the cost that they will get?
Yes.
The fee. And then, these are all going to be speeding tickets? And that goes to us or goes to the state?
The speeding tickets will go directly to the city.
To the city?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Anybody else up here have any questions? Otherwise, we'll ask the public for comment or questions.
I have a question, maybe this for you, Jessica, is what budget item does this revenue go into, and then how is that money available?
So the way that we would probably set this up is that it would be a revenue line item under the police function in the general fund. And so that's where things would be credited to when received. And so it'd be a revenue of the general fund.
Anybody else up here or out there? Roll call.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
That carried. On to resolution number three out of seven.
Resolution 2022-290 approving public service agreement with Marshall Cemetery Association, DBA Riverside Cemetery.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is the agreement that Lynch-Dellis has put together based on the discussion that we had, I believe, at the final meeting in September. And so it is a not-to-exceed $45,000 amount, which would be based on reimbursement. And what's before you still needs to go through Riverside Cemetery Board as well, but I believe you said a meeting tomorrow night. So we believe we'll be close to having this fully executed very soon.
Other questions or comments by the council? Comments or questions by the public? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. I was encouraged by one of the estimates I saw for trying to help out with that project, and also encouraged with the community support behind it. Next item—or this one's a public hearing, I guess, not a resolution. What's our public hearing about?
Yes, we have three public hearings with the resolution for action following. The first hearing is a public hearing on proposal to enter into a essential purpose loan agreement.
We have to do all three separately, I understand. Let's declare the public hearing is open at 5:49 PM. Did the city clerk receive any written comments?
Yes, I did, Your Honor. Lee Botter, 401 Orchard Drive submitted written comments to the council encouraging them to vote no on moving forward with the general obligation bonds until the public has the opportunity to see and approve all plans for the projects being developed. She outlined her concerns with the Interactive Water Plaza specifically.
Thank you. I'll acknowledge that the council and mayor did receive those this afternoon. Any other public comments? I'm sorry, any other written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments?
Lee Botter, 401 Orchard Drive. I'd like to elaborate on the comments that I sent. On page two of your packet memorandum, there is a thing that's called Water Plaza. In your packets for the capital improvement plan, GO Plan, it's been called a splash pad. Council approved funding for the concept development of a splash pad. I'd like to tell you guys, this is not a splash pad. This truly is a water plaza. The concerns that I have are in relationship to the actual concept that I've seen. The concept that I've seen—I don't have the actual concept. All I did was have screenshots. The design comes from a theme of child's play, skipping stones across water. There's areas to sit and sidewalk with babblers leading to a central area. The central location, there would be up to three metal sculptures, depending upon the funding, that would be made of stainless steel, ranging in size from what appeared to be around six foot tall to 12 to five foot tall with water flowing around it. Is it a cool design? Absolutely. But the concerns I have that I've addressed in our meetings were, where are the interactive play features? It appears unlikely that they're going to be included because they take away from the art. A comment presented by another community member was, it isn't a big deal for a child to climb on the sculptures because the kids climb on the sculpture at Echo. Sorry, in my opinion, it is a big deal. Letting a child climb on a wet and hot metal surface that is up to 12 to 15 tall shouts of, when will a child be injured? Not if a child will be injured. When that happens, there's lots of questions that need to be addressed, such as injury for the child, lawsuit against the city. Many other questions do come to mind, but I'm guessing you get my point. You saw my questions this afternoon. A child or an adult with a walker could roll into the area assuming their equipment is not motorized. However, there is no play features that have an interactive design to allow them to play with their family and friends. On a personal note, since I know from having a child that used a walker and friends are in a wheelchair, it breaks my heart to think that we would have a child or an adult with special needs that would once again be discriminated against and have to sit on the sidelines watching while others play on that equipment. As we all know, complying with ADA standards is a law. Any newly constructed and older play areas after March 15 of 2012 must comply with the 2010 Standards of Accessible Design. Bottom line, the proposed concept is not inclusive of all abilities. I have been assured that the proposed design may change prior to public presentation, which is scheduled later this fall. I don't mean to be disrespectful to anyone, but I've heard that storyline before, and changes often don't occur because the—it doesn't meet the wants of some individuals. Splash for Life, which I am the co-founder of, we've commented several times. We understand that the final design and the location does not have to be the design we envisioned, and what we've shared with the public, city leaders, councilmen, the mayor, and city staff. But it does have to include accessibility for all. All of our children and adults with varying abilities, our parents, grandparents, caregivers, everyone that has a socioeconomic status, religious, race, language. If you truly want sculptures in Marshalltown, now including a fountain, which is what this is designed to be, to meet the art and the community initiative, and you want to assume the potential risk of injury with the current design being developed, so be it, but just be honest about it. There are many other concerns that I will not get into, but it is regret with deep, deep heartfelt regret that I have to say that Splash for Life cannot support the current design that's being proposed. We don't want anyone hurt or injured, which potentially could happen with the current design. If the design parameters change to truly reflect a splash pad design that is inclusive for all of our Central Iowa family, friends, and neighbors, and does not pose unnecessary liability risk to the city of Marshalltown, Splash for Life, and our supporters will be more than happy to support this long-awaited addition to our park system. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for all your work. Thank you, Mike, for all your work.
Thank you, Lee. I started—the—he went over a little bit, almost doubled, but I know the time you've spent in this and the committee you formed. I went to Iowa City, went to Spirit Lake, and looked at splash pads because of your efforts in this one. So I wanted the public to hear what we were able to read this afternoon. Thank you. Any other public comment about this issue?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Water, water everywhere, and not a drop for growth. That was the article in the TR's past times this past Saturday, where Mr. Schneider and Mr. Walker outlined the problem that we have. 600 million gallons of water, we use it all. We need to make another 6 million gallons, so we need to borrow money for a water improvement project. We can't fund the fountain for the cemetery, but we can build a splash—well, it's not a splash pad, it's an interactive water feature, where we have evaporation that we need to refill, and we don't have that. So I don't think you want to borrow money for that.
Other public comment?
Serena Stabenow, 1403 West Main Street. So again, Dux Walker and Jeff Schneider stated that in Marshalltown—and the Marshalltown Saturday paper, they didn't have enough water to grow Marshalltown. So then why are we borrowing money for amenities when Marshalltown needs the basic needs like neighboring streets and a water department? Plus, that we should be focusing on the $200,000 hole in the budget. And people tell me that there's enough artwork in Marshalltown, like my grandma who drives down the street, and when she comes across a pothole, her dentures fall out. This is what she told me the other day. So we need some work done in Marshalltown, people. This is my grandma, who's 89 years old. So, thank you.
Other public comment? Other public comment?
John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to pause with you all for a moment and really take a look at the items in your packet that you have the opportunity to approve and move forward tonight. It's a lot of really tremendous items that are going to be of large benefit to the community. Certainly, I don't know that anybody in the community, well, there are a few in the community, Shelley at Water Works being definitely one of them, that understand the value of having additional water capacity for expanded growth opportunities. There are other opportunities to pursue the necessary funds in order to add additional water capacity. Tonight is about setting a standard for Marshalltown that says, hey, we're going to invest in the pieces of Marshalltown that make us unique, make us different, help us draw folks in, and help us retain folks that are here. And it's really a workforce initiative around this. So I implore you guys to vote in favor of continuing to move this forward, and I'm excited to see all these items develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Deb Millizer, I'm the Director of the Central Business District, and although the Water Plaza is not in my district, I have to say that I think it's an exciting venture for the community. I echo everything that John has to say about we need to recruit and retain our residents that we have here in Marshalltown, and that comes down to our culture. Art is a part of our culture, it's part of our placemaking, it's part of our place attachment. People move to communities that they have attachment to, they want to stay in communities that they have attachment to. So when we're able to offer these amenities, that helps us overall. So I think John summed it all up, but I just wanted to say that I feel like this is an important feature for our community, and sometimes you have to borrow to get to where you want to go.
Anyone else? Let's call the roll. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Need to go to staff review. And then council comments.
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. I'm just going to open the document that links all these together to show you the projects. See if I can get it bigger here. Okay, so the first hearing involves all of these projects except for the $250,000 trail connection from the skate park to American Legion Freedom Rock. That's going to be your next hearing. And then the City Hall parking lot is the hearing after that. So in total, we're asking to borrow $10,165,000. $165,000 is for the bond issuance. So just to gain clarity on what you're voting for.
Thank you. And after staff review comes council comments. Any council lawyer wish to comment? Yes, sir, you may.
I'm on the committee, same as Lee, for the water feature that's coming in Marshalltown. I want to make it clear to everyone that it's a little bit disturbing to me that a design that is still on paper is called somewhat dangerous or could be dangerous, and they don't like it. I don't think there's a person on our committee that would intentionally or unintentionally design anything that isn't what Marshalltown needs and is safe and is something amazing. And from the drawings that we're working off of right now, it is amazing. I also know that working on a committee like this, I have one vote, the same as council up here. My opinion does not matter more than anyone else's opinion on the committee. I have to give respect to everyone else, and what we come out with might not have been my vision, what I thought that should be. But what I do know is that when you work collaboratively with people, what normally happens is it comes out much better. And I cannot wait for the initial designs that are going to be shown at the Main Street at the holiday stroll. The community is going to be able to come in and look at it, get a first blush, see what you think, because I'll guarantee you, it's something better than you think it is. We have incredibly talented people giving a lot of time into this committee to bring something that Marshalltown can be proud of, something that you can point at, something that will resonate with you because it has so many meanings. And to claim that anything is wrong when the design is still on paper is disappointing. Thank you.
Other council comment?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
You know, what this all comes down to, the borrowing every year, is about a vision for Marshalltown. I'm a person that goes to Ames every week. I go down to Des Moines at least once a month. To think that Marshalltown truly is going to get to 50,000 people, in my opinion, is ludicrous. This town has always been 27,000. When I grew up here, it was a white-collar, blue-collar mixed town. Now it's a blue-collar town. To think that someone's going to move here because of a water feature and stay here, someone's going to move here because of a $700,000 bike bridge and stay here because of it. We are going to go broke trying to compete with the Altoona's, the Bondurants, the Ankeny's, the West Des Moines, the Waukes, the Ames of the world. The vision I see for Marshalltown is, let's just be the nicest, cleanest, 27,000 population town there is in the country, and then people will come here. If it's crime-free, if the streets are nice, if the town is clean, if we enforce the ordinances. If all this money was rerouted to go to the streets, I think people would come here because the town's cleaner and nicer. The streets have been neglected for years. I can't support any of the borrowing this year that leaves only 2.6 million for streets. So I respectfully disagree with my counterparts up here. I've said on specific items what I disagree on. The people, in my opinion, the people that are driving all of this borrowing for these different projects, they're not going to be here long-term. And the town's going down a dark path, and it's be a lot cheaper just to enforce ordinance, enforce crime, and clean up the town. So I can't support any of this. Thank you.
Other council comment? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 6:05 PM. May I entertain a motion to approve it?
There's no motion on this one.
Oh, we don't have a motion on this one, I'm sorry. Public hearing only. All right, let's go on to the next public hearing. What is that one, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing on proposal to enter into a general purpose loan agreement, number one.
I'll declare that public hearing is open at 6:06 PM. Did you receive any other written materials that we have not yet discussed?
No, Your Honor.
Then it is time for public comments.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I'm not for supporting trails, this trail connection. It goes nowhere. I know it goes to Freedom Rock, and that's not nowhere, but you can get to Freedom Rock from a street, and there is a bike path along the street. We don't need a $700,000 bridge. We don't need that piece of trail across the Legion Golf Course. We don't even know if Wayward Social is going to build a trail behind their place. Maybe we'll end up paying for that. I don't think we need to support this.
Other public comment?
Serena Stabinow, 1403 West Main Street. So I thought I would end with a poem, you know, something. Mythology wasn't my thing. In college, I was mostly at DQ, so please forgive me. So I'm trying to learn what this guy was saying. "If I could say it, write it, sing it, there would be no need to build it," by Bruce H. White. So what this means is it's a phoenix bird that lives for 500 years, then it sets itself on fire and then comes back from its ashes. So this thing that sits in front of the veterans' home in the backyard of our schools is right down there. It's a hunk of metal, and I want it removed from my backyard. I'm going to petition that it be removed, that we, that all these people, this is funded by the Public Art Committee, Iowa Department of Culture, Martha Ellentai, 13th Street End, and I want it removed from 13th Street. I don't want to see it anymore. It's the ugliest hunk of metal I've ever seen. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Point of order, Your Honor. Next time we have a comment out of context of the agenda item, I guess I'd like a redirection or call it a question with regards to what they're stating, just to the previous comment. I'm not sure how that relates to anything here, so.
I have to admit, I had a discussion with our city councilor today and invited him to join in more frequently than in the past, or our former city councilor has done, our city attorney, rather. And so I was kind of waiting to see if he did. I was tempted myself. I appreciate that, and I'll be more sensitive to that, and I think our city attorney will as well. Anyone else have a point of order before we take further comment? Further comment?
Okay, Your Honor, councilors, thank you. Cindy Parks, 127 East Main Street, Kibbe Building. I can only speak from personal experience. I actually drove to Decorah to ride around on a trail. So I would say that, on a bike trail, I would say that providing more trails is not necessarily keeping people here or making people move here, but possibly also driving people to visit and visit. I went and I had dinner, we stayed in an Airbnb, so it's going to, I would hope that it would also drive the economy. They would go visit downtown shops and restaurants and other places. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Other public comment? All right, time for staff review then.
Again, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Again, this is 255,000, up to 255,000 for the trail connection between the Freedom Rock and the skate park.
Thank you. Time for council comments. I'll declare this public hearing is closed now at 6:11 PM, and we are not calling for any motion or approval on this one, right? Thank you. And so on to the next, and last of the, oh, no, on to the next resolution, rather.
Public hearing on proposal to enter into a general purpose loan agreement, number two.
I'm sorry, I missed the count because the first one wasn't numbered. Okay. Thank you. We will declare this public hearing is open at 6:11. Did you get any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Time for public comments.
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. I'm asking for some clarification on the parking lot. The rationale behind that is I've had several of my clients, my office is now located on the south side post tornado. However, several clients are downtown, and they've expressed concern on lack of parking. So I'm not really clear as to what's going on with the parking lot. Can someone please clarify? Thank you.
Other public comment? Staff review.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. This is borrowing up to $400,000 for the parking lot right across the street from City Hall. So we'll be redoing State Street, so we wanted to update this as well.
Any council comments? I'll declare that public hearing is closed as of 6:12 PM. And again, no vote. Let's go on to the final item number seven, and that's a resolution of what?
Resolution 2022-291, taking additional action on proposals to enter into general obligation loan agreements, setting the date of sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2022A, and taxable general obligation property restoration bonds, Series 2022B, and authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in connection therewith.
Entertain a motion to approve it. I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion is open. If there isn't any public, if there's any discussion or council comments, let's open it to the mic.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So part of this resolution is to sell a bond that is taxable. So we are going to pay a premium for that bond in interest because it is not non-taxable bond, and that's for tearing down dilapidated structures. I think we're overspending ourselves. I think we're borrowing for things we don't need. We need water, we need streets, we don't need amenities first. Thank you.
Other public comment? Roll call.
Cal.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Oh.
Isom.
Yes.
That carried. And on to ordinances H, and we just have one of those. What's that one?
Ordinance 15053, to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 117, junk dealers and pawnbrokers, first reading.
Is there a motion to approve it?
Approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion.
Your Honor, for the record, I will abstain from discussion and vote due to I have a conflict of interest on this one.
Thank you. Any other discussion by the council? Public discussion. Seeing no one rising to the microphone, let's call the roll.
Schneider.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
That carried. Very good. Before we go on to discussion, I'd like to commend the Police Department, the chief, Chris Jones, the vendors that spent time, the councilors that listened to comments and the changes that were made in order to get that enacted so we can help our police catch criminals. Onto the discussion items. The first one is the MCBD request for four-year, 24 funding. Fiscal, what did I say? Four-year, it should have been fiscal year 24 funding.
With that, we have Cindy Parks, who is the President of the Marshalltown Central Business District, here to present that request.
Yes, again, Cindy Parks, 127 East Main Street, number three in Marshalltown here. I am a resident of the Kibbe Building. So strange thing is, if you'd asked me 20 years ago if I would be living in Marshalltown, working in Marshalltown, and only live four blocks away from my place of business, I would have told you, you are absolutely crazy, that that would never happen in a million years, and wow, was I ever wrong. I am living in the Kibbe Building, which is the 2014 Challenge Grant recipient of, yeah, the Challenge Grant recipient, Iowa Challenge Grant Dollar-for-Dollar Match, and refurbished into four upper story units, one of which I live in, and it's fabulous, and I don't know where I'd be without it. And then get to walk four blocks. So flash forward to now, we have Zimora's, another Challenge Grant recipient, and the Hopkins Building being another Challenge Grant recipient. These projects wouldn't happen if...
These projects wouldn't happen if our organization wasn't here and if we weren't part of the Main Street Iowa community, Main Street America community. Again, we are asking for a little bit more in funding, and I know you want answers, and I know you want numbers. Unfortunately, I don't have specifics. I have generalities, and if we need more specifics, I would have to go back and put together a better number request. But right now, we're looking at retaining volunteers, getting new ones, flower baskets. We are going to look at upgrading those to a bigger basket so that the volunteers don't have to go water every day. That's 40, 40-plus volunteers, two people every day for about 12 weeks every day. That takes a lot of time. We're looking at refurbishing the arrows downtown, in the alleyway, the archway, putting that up, wayfinding signs for when, not permanent, but temporary wayfinding signs when State Street is being reconstructed, and when Main Street is being reconstructed to help people find their way still to businesses and buildings. And then eventually, the permanent wayfinding signs. During our Be Ridiculous Day, we partnered with Live After Five to provide a concert that evening. We would like to increase concerts, and we don't know actually if Live After Five will be anymore since the Orpheum has been sold. That cost right there, $1,400 for bands, and then there's additional costs for liquor license and other admin costs for that. So we're looking at that as well. Let's see here. There we go. I don't have much more on my list, but I do have Deb with me to kind of give you an overview of our '22 year, how it went, and what we're proud of. I guess one last thing I will leave you with is that we did get a 24% increase in investment between friends of MCBD and investors now. I guess it's important also to tell you that we don't have members. We have investors and anybody in the Marshalltown Central Business District in our location, our area, can get design services, technical services, marketing analysis, all of those provided by the Main Street Iowa, Main Street America. So they didn't have to buy in basically to have access to that, and that we thought was a good idea. That way, everybody can participate regardless of financial status and that kind of thing. So Deb, would you like to provide us some more?
Deb Milliser, Executive Director of the Marshalltown Central Business District. Firstly, I would like to say thank you to the council for providing additional funds for our wreaths. As you can see in the back of the room, they have arrived, and they are beautiful, and they are bright. And when you voted to help us finish our funding off for those wreaths, what you said to me was, is that the aesthetics matter in our community. Our aesthetics matter for our culture and our vibe, our place attachment. I'm going to talk about place attachment a lot because I feel like it. It is super important. A lot of times, people see the MCBD as maybe the party people because we're known for the Holiday Stroll. This year's our 30th year for the Holiday Stroll. We brought back Be Ridiculous Days. Well, we've done it for two years. In the past, it was called Ridiculous Days. It kind of died down for a few years. This year will be our second year for Haunt the Block. Last year, we had 27 businesses that participated. This year, we have 49. So we almost doubled that. That tells me when these businesses are getting on board that they are buying into the culture. They are buying into this being a community, that they are, you know, helping each other out. They want this to be a place to be. We coordinate all of that. I have a strong promotions team that are all volunteers. Cindy talked about volunteers earlier, and she mentioned our flower basket program. We raise about $12,000 to $15,000 every year and fund those flower baskets. We also have about 40 volunteers that work on the flower baskets throughout the year, or through the summer for 12 weeks. If you take those volunteer hours and you convert that into what it is if you were to pay them to do that time, that's almost $18,000 with the funds of volunteer work that we have done. And that does not include the berms or anything else that goes with that. Each year, we have a Team Up for Cleanup, which, twice a year, we do that. We have 30 to 40 volunteers that do that, times two hours each one. You know, you're talking at, you know, $3,500, $4,000 worth of manpower that happens right there because we coordinate those efforts. I think sometimes, you know, one of the questions that I get asked a lot is how to quantify what it is that we do. Sometimes that's really hard to do because we are, we are, I would like to call it more like the culture people. All of the things that we do comes down to the culture, place attachment, community engagement. As Cindy mentioned, we are a Main Street Iowa community. We are one of 54 communities out of 947 incorporated communities throughout the state. It's a special place. Marshalltown is a special place because we were able to go through the accreditation, and we've done that accreditation for 20 years now to be able to maintain that status as being a Main Street Iowa community. Because we are a Main Street Iowa community, each year, we have an opportunity to apply for a Challenge Grant. We received almost $75,000 for the Zemora's Project in 2020. We received $100,000 match-for-match grant for the Hopkins Building. We were able to write a grant, not because we're a Main Street Iowa community, but because we are a 501(c)(3), we were able to write a grant to the Community Foundation and secure $150,000 worth of funding for projects that were over $250,000 in the downtown. Because of that, we were able to add additional funds to Hopkins, the Gilders and Sims Building, and now the Pollys Project. One of the other things that I am quite proud of, when I talk about economic vitality and our strength, is when COVID came through, we were able to write a grant to the Martha Allen Ty Foundation and receive funds, $30,000 that we distributed each month for, I think, about three months, that went to our downtown restaurants. The deratio hit. We wrote another grant to the Martha Allen Ty Foundation and were grateful for their support. We were able to offer another $52,000 to our bars and restaurants in the downtown. That not only helped them economically, but it also sent the message of hope, strength, we care about you. It's about relationships and caring and building those relationships and working together. We're hosting, we're building a business owners' events, trying to network and connect people. The downtown is the heart of the community. It's the heart of this county, and it's important that we continue to support that. Just another little tidbit that I'd like to share with you. We had Main Street America come here in the middle of September. I had a boo-boo, and I invited you all, and then I had to disinvite some of you. I had a learning opportunity. But we did have a couple councilors that were able to join us that. And one of the things that she said, and she said repeatedly, was that other communities, less the size, less than half the size, have more than one staff. They have two to three full-time staff. We are, it's me and 10 to 12 volunteers that are the Board of Directors, and they're excellent. But they're doing a lot. At some point, we need to be able to grow so that we can bring more staff on. We have some limitations because we lost a lot of buildings when the deratio, the tornado came through. So we have to do some unique things to be able to build our funds and do some reach out. As we continue to develop those properties, I imagine that that will grow. We are continuing to grow. If you looked at our social media presence, we have increased that by 180% since 2019. People are buying in. They're drinking the Kool-Aid. They think downtown is the place to be. That is growing more and more and more. You know, I get asked about recruitment. It's about retention at this point because we don't have the space, we don't have viable buildings at this point. My office has worked on the downtown revitalization grant with Region 6 and the City of Marshalltown. When State Street gets done, we'll be working on that. When we're working on Main Street, we will have our hands in the mix for that as well. There's just so many things that our office does that I think that some people miss, miss all the things that are going on behind the scenes because not all of those grants and things are like pushed out there. But we're doing all of that work. And we like to have a good time, so we throw a few events, you know, on in the downtown. So that still goes to quality of life, building a positive culture, making it a place where people want to be. And something as simple as Haunt the Block, where you go from 27 businesses to 49 in one year, and people asking from outside of the district if they can come down and be a part of it, I think that says a lot. I also think that the fact that some of our businesses are going the extra mile to get people into their door and do interactions, like mini haunted houses and things like that, all of this stuff is community-related. It's all about creating a place where people want to be. I used to be a social worker. I was a social worker for 12 years. And one of the core things that I always remembered from that is feelings drive behaviors. Our feelings are derived from our experiences, that what is around us, our interactions, that's place attachment. So if we want to do better, we have to do more, and we have to be able to fund to be able to do that. So I get very passionate about this position. I've been in it for three years. When I started, I didn't think, oh, I'm going to just love this so much, but I do. And I think Marshalltown is the place to be. We are growing. We're thriving. We have some great leaders at the helm, and I appreciate that I got to ramble for more than three minutes. So with that, that's all I have to share. So I thank you for your consideration, and I know Cindy would be happy, Cindy or myself would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And you didn't mention the thing that MCBD has been doing for the longest time is helping out on the facade grants. I mean, you mentioned some of the recent ones, but the rate of return on those investments is just kind of...
Yes, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we have done 22 facade, facade and city code grants since 2019. Each time I do one of those grants, it takes about 10 to 15 hours of my time that I vet those and work with my grant committee from start to finish. Those grants are open for, they have about a year to complete it, and then sometimes those have to be renewed. We have to come before you and ask you for an extension. Each one of those grants was about 10 to 15 hours of MCBD time in order to vet those before we bring them to you to make a decision.
And thanks for the military honor banners.
I cannot believe that I forgot that. That is part of the culture and the vibe of this community. We have the vets home out here. I know they have like 400 residents, that they have all of their staff out there as well. It, that's really awesome that we have that. We have a lot of vets in this community. And, okay, I love the building projects, but my favorite project, hands down, is the veterans banners. I have, well, I get one about every week. I maybe have about 40 now that are on the list for the next time. And I've had other communities call me and ask me how we did it, what our model was, and shared our model. Yeah, people traveled here. We have Memorial Day service in the downtown. That was a new thing that we did. We're really working on that relationship piece. Since, okay, so I'll talk just a little bit more, and then I'll buzz off. The Veterans Affairs Office, when we did these banners, we built a great relationship with the Veterans Affairs, which then correlated into other veterans groups. Holiday Stroll, I want to increase the quality of life for everybody that is in our community. I know my concentration is the downtown, but I want it for everybody in the community and our county. We're working with, we reached out to IVH. They're going to bring their bus in our parade. They're going, after the parade, they're pulling over by Zemora's. We're working on volunteers to come and help the vets so that they could enjoy the celebration, and we are working on gift bags for those vets. But that's just, it's a little thing, but it's all those little things that add to the culture and vibe of our community. So it was just one of those partnerships that developed out of the banner program. So, and I look forward to seeing the next round. It's a lot of work, but I love it.
Thank you. I'm going to wait till you sit down to make my next comment. Somebody on your committee or your staff will also convince the county to open up our courthouse so we get a preview of it. Oh, no, no, no.
We are excited about that, too.
Yeah. Well, some of us lawyers and judges and people are, too. Thank you for that. The mic is open, up here and out there.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Last I knew, MCBD was a 501(c)(6). I didn't know they changed to a 501(c)(3). As a 501(c)(6), they're a lobby group. We're basically, you're basically paying them to lobby you for money. We're funding all of their salaries through TIF money, which takes money from the school district and the county and even the city. It needs to be rolled into the chamber. I've said this before many times, and I think that will happen in the near future, maybe. Thanks.
Other public comment?
You can be right behind me. Cindy Parks, 127 East Main Street.
You were faster than John.
Sitting closer. We are, we had at one time Ben, a 501(c)(6). That is no longer. We chose to, instead of have members, have investors, and not charge everybody for the services that MCBD provides, those free services, so that anybody in the district, regardless of their income or whatever slights they might think of, they can come to MCBD and have design services, have architectural services and other services, marketing services, technical services, training opportunities without a fee.
John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. Just want to say there are no plans to try and roll MCBD into the chamber. We value the strong relationship and partnership that we have with them. Though I have no doubt if that were ever a conversation in the future, we would probably see similar arguments as was just made against funding for that program. So, thank you.
Like, is still open for other public comment?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
A couple of questions for the two of you, young ladies. You're asking for a $15,000 increase. Did I read that right, correct? What would you do with the money, is my first question? I guess basically I'm saying, why 15? Why not 20? Why not 50? Why not 80?
Well, I guess someone had told me, well, go big or go home. And if you're going to ask, ask big, and then you kind of go backwards from there. But I would spend it on, again, Deb was talking about how she needs some assistance. So again, we like to have a co-op student, an intern student, come in and do a summer internship. Not only would that take a young person and invest them and give them an opportunity to learn what a nonprofit organization does and how it works, but they would do administrative duties that would take the pressure off Deb. She could visit with the downtown business and building owners and get a better handle on exactly what happens when we have our events, maybe formulate a plan to organize numbers or how we're going to concentrate on calculating the difference when there isn't an MCBD event and that kind of thing. We want to upgrade the flower baskets to the bigger ones. I don't have a budget for that, but that always, it's going to cost us a significant amount of money. The upgrading of that, the arrows, we know that the last time the arrows were painted, they're going to need refurbished and upgraded. We know the last time that happened, somebody was paid to do that. The archway in the alleyway also is a project of ours that has been on hiatus for I don't know how long, and we want to install that as well. So those are just a few of the design items that I would be spending money on, that we would be spending money on. As far as promotions, I know Lucia would love to expand Haunt the Block, have a hayride, have kids' activities downtown. And then we really would like to make sure that we keep on Be Ridiculous Day, a concert, concerts, a music event in the evening with beverages and food trucks and whatnot. concerts, a music event in the evening with beverages and food trucks and whatnot. However, if we don't have a partner for that, that would definitely be an additional large expense on our part to fund that.
Then my second question is, if this body gave you even more money, do you think it would expedite the recovery of Main Street?
What do you mean by expedite?
Speed it up.
Okay, like, as in, and recovery? Are you speaking specifically to buildings? Businesses?
Yes.
Okay, well...
Because I have a fear you're going to lose some more businesses before you gain some more businesses. So I guess, what does it take you financially to keep that from happening and bring more downtown from other parts of town?
So I would ask you, how am I going to, what am I doing that's going to occur a loss of businesses? Is there, I guess maybe I'm not seeing where you're saying that I'm going to lose businesses. I don't know.
I don't think that's a conversation I can have in public.
Oh. So what happens?
You and I can have that conversation later.
Okay. What happens if I do lose businesses?
I guess what I'm saying is, all the things you do, this culture thing, what are you doing to make each business stronger? What are you doing, and maybe this isn't part of your preview, or your charter, what are you doing to grow these businesses that exist in downtown? And if that's not part of your charter, then just tell me.
Cindy, can I? Yep, sure. Okay, all right. Deb Millizer, MCBD. And how I'd like to respond to that question is, I'm one human being, so if we're able, I mean, I have a great board, great board, but they have regular gigs that they're doing on a day-to-day basis. Their hours that they give to the MCBD are invaluable, and we could not do what we're doing without them. However, when we have a community that is 27,000, 28,000 people, and other organizations in those, in communities that are 11,000, have two or three people, that tells me that, that tells me that I'm doing a lot of work myself, but if I could, like, clone myself, or get somebody to be my partner in it, somebody else to come to the office, take some of the administration things off of me, I can be out and about and finding out exactly what my downtown businesses need. It would afford me the opportunity to have those conversations with them on a deeper level. I have great relationships with many of them, but a lot of times, I just get to sit in there, I get to stand in there and say, how's it going, you know, little immediate needs, but I could have some deeper conversations, do some deeper dives. I could also increase our capacity for our technology. It's really hard to take another step forward when you're still in the day-to-day, trying to figure out day-to-day how you're going to get everything completed. Absolutely, I think, you know, we want to add additional staff that will increase our capacity to be able to meet the needs of our current businesses, and as recruiting businesses, that we're able to meet the needs of them as well.
The reason I'm asking is, I don't think 15,000 makes a dent. You know, if we truly believe in downtown and the rebuilding of it, I truly believe you need 100,000 a year, just to start.
You want to open your wallet?
I'm willing to open the taxpayers' wallets.
I like that.
I don't think so.
Any other questions while...
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Remember another time that that happened, and we ended up with an impact program that seems to be doing pretty well.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Just a general comment. The previous community I lived in, I was on the Chamber of Main Street Board for eight years as the treasurer, and we are funding it, that community, which was a fraction of this size, is funding it the same amount Marshalltown is funding our MCBD. So just a point of reference there, which I think echoes what they were saying. Many communities smaller than our size are funding it at a greater rate.
Your Honor, let me ask this, if I may. Since this is just a discussion, is there anybody else that sees a need to fund this at a higher level than 55,000?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I think 15,000 is rather cheap. I don't, I don't think that I'd agree up to 100,000, but I could see an increase of over 15.
At least 25.
I think my feedback on this discussion is that I, especially to Councilman Kell's point, I think that there is a landing pad for greater dollars, but it also needs to be pointed out that they didn't come with concrete ass tonight. So, give me a quality plan, speak very clearly in terms of dollars to the value-adding initiatives that you're proposing, and give me a timeline of implementation, so we can actually have an ROI and gather around it, and prioritize it from there.
I would agree. I could support more funding, but I need to see a clear business plan, and I'd like it presented very succinctly.
Other input up here?
I guess my only added comment is, we're asking to shoulder a little bit more, especially with some of the implementation of the downtown plan, so I think the conversation, it's warranted, but I don't disagree with anything said thus far.
Just as a point to clarify, why we're having this discussion tonight is because the funding source that we do use is tax increment financing. And so we have been doing this annually on a development agreement, which would be coming back to you on a public hearing if you'd like to choose to stay with that funding source at the November 14 meeting, to be held on November 28. As, the November 28 meeting is when we have to certify all of our TIF requests for the next fiscal year that starts July 1st of 2023. So there is a timeliness to this in terms of this funding source, but if you wanted to change funding sources, this could leave the conversation open-ended for a bit longer.
Your Honor, I would like to see the organization come back at the next meeting and present specific dollar requests, as mentioned by Councilmembers Walker and Schneider, and echoed by Councilman Isom. And I don't have a problem changing that funding source to local option sales tax. And then, you know, if we're under a timeline for TIF, you know, we can always go one year and always go back to TIF later on. Is that correct?
Yes, this is all done just as an annual basis with the development agreement, so it would be the same process next year, a final meeting in October, discussion, first meeting in November, public.
I like the idea of, make your wish list, come back to us, and tell us exactly what was being asked here tonight, specifically, you know, what's an intern going to cost you, or a part-time person? What is it you can do for the businesses? Because I'll be honest with you, Deb needs to get out of the office, because business owners have told me that she has not contacted them in a long time, have been out, and they're not even sure that, what the organization does for them. So I guess I'd make a motion for them to come back next week with a detailed presentation, or next meeting, I mean.
I'll take that as a motion, and there is a second to it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Wadihaf?
Yes.
All right, staff and CBD has its direction. Okay, how about the next discussion item? That is, the MCD, MCBD incentive grant funding for the fiscal year 2024.
Yes, I'll do an introduction, then ask Deb and Cindy if they have anything they want to add. We do have the, I think, the most recent updated grant listing in your packet here tonight. So we have this incentive grant program that, as Deb mentioned, she administers on behalf of the city. The funds never actually go into the MCBD. They're always held at the city, and basically reimbursement requests for the owners are brought forward by Deb. So this is truly city funding that they administer for us, but it never leaves our coffers. So the funding, the incentive grant, we have been funding around that $50,000 a year mark, and that is the request, again, for this year. My recommendation would be to follow TIF on this one, with basically doing the process of setting a public hearing and having a development agreement in the November meetings for consideration.
So as I mentioned, since, Deb Millizer, MCBD, not that you've forgotten who I am in the last couple of minutes, the incentive grants are really kind of small catalyst grants, are catalyst funding for people to improve their buildings in the downtown, whether that's city code or facade, and we all know aesthetics matter, you know. I foresee, each year, or each time we come to ask, I try to get a feel of what we have that I'm working on, that I've had conversations about. I, I don't really want to say them out loud, because it's still their business, you know, like, I don't want to divulge things that aren't divulged publicly yet. But I do have a building, two buildings on East Main Street that are still eligible for, I believe, let's see, $41,000 for one building, and another $20,000 for another building, and I have another building owner that has been talking to me that would be eligible for another $8,500. With the funds that we have left, which is about $23,000, with $50,000, we'd be able to meet those needs. I hope, and I honestly hope, that I get to come back and ask you for more money for this grant program, because that will mean that other businesses are doing it as well. But at this point, 50,000 would meet our need to cover what I know is coming down the pipelines.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Your Honor, this program's proved itself. I would make a motion that we move forward with Jessica's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Other discussion? Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Wadihaf?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. Before going on to the next item, I didn't call for public comment, so if that happens again, and somebody is dying to speak about something, and I've skipped that opportunity, please raise your hand or stand up. Next one is the Doratio Housing Grant Proposal.
Yes, Michelle and I are going to co-present this, but we'll go through some information that the Iowa Economic Development Authority has put out first, and just really summarize this information here for you, to give you the background of the program. So there were four counties that they determined were, that the state determined were hit the hardest with the Doratio, Lynn County being the number one, Lynn County being the county that receives 80% of the disaster recovery grant funds. But they have set aside a portion of this funding for Marshall, Tama, and Benton Counties as well, and the various programs that are underneath that. Specifically, tonight, we're going to talk to you about the For Sale Housing Program, which you can see that they have allocated $4 million to be granted out to projects in Marshall, Tama, and Benton Counties for that. The grants are $100,000 per unit, with up to $25,000 for mitigation items as well, some of which are required. For example, you need a safe room. If you have a basement, or if you don't have a basement, you need to have a fortified roof system, which fortified is a specific branding of roof, because, again, we're looking to mitigate wind-related disasters in future, and making sure that we have housing under this grant program that's resilient enough to do that. The other thing that we have available through this, that's both through the For Sale and Rental Programs, is 1.2 million for the three counties that can help support infrastructure. And so the program, or what we're going to present to you here tonight does not have any infrastructure, but is, but is something just to note that this is a unique program that, unfortunately, we had to go through some bad stuff to be eligible, but we hope that we can take advantage of this opportunity. So these housing units, and the funding source means that they have to be marketed to, or can only be sold to individuals who are in that low to moderate income range, which you can see, I've highlighted what Marshall County is there for families, per the most recent guidelines. The other unique facet of this program is that the houses actually have to be marketed to individuals impacted by the Doratio for a four-month period before they could be sold to anybody else. It's, again, trying to make sure that those who have been impacted have the best chance at recovery moving forward. That doesn't mean it has to be fully built, and then you actually market it. It's a, it's a process, as things are happening, and the state has said they would work with us on that. Another interesting thing is just maximum sales price is set at 175,000, and that buyers will be able to access some really incredible down payment assistance as well, that goes not only towards the down payment, but also closing costs as well. And so there, there just is a lot of really positive features to this funding. You might be asking, how do you build a home? How much do you build a home for, and then can only sell it for 175,000? How does that work? Well, there is an affordability period, meaning that if the original buyer, who is income qualifying, does go to sell it at some point, there will be an unforgiven balance of that initial grant that will be repaid if they do not sell it to someone who is also income qualifying. So there are some different features to that, to ensure that, you know, the housing didn't just get, you know, lived in for a year by someone qualifying, and then sold to someone else who's not qualifying. And there's the same period of affordability with the down payment assistance as well. Would you like to talk about Green Streets, Michelle?
You're doing great. Michelle Sponheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Yeah, one of the other criteria associated with this grant is that it does need to comply, the properties need to comply with the Iowa Green Street Criteria. This is a standard that is set out, which addresses some building techniques, talking about efficiencies, energy efficiencies, and some other features, and then also site type of things, so retaining stormwater, for example, is one of those kind of things. So meeting the Green Street Criteria is a requirement of this grant. The state has a consultant or a staff member who is specialized, specializes in the Green Street Criteria, working with each potential applicant to look at our projects, and how are we meeting this? And so we've had those kind of conversations, Jessica and I have participated in some of those trainings as well, to make sure we know what those qualifications are. And so there are certain things that are required, certain things that are point kind of driven, that you can, in order to meet those requirements. And so that is something that we're looking at. It also includes universal design, which has to do with accessibility, and that, what we're anticipating is at least one of the units in each of our potential projects would have to be qualifying for that. Let's see, we also have, within these projects, we do have to think about some other requirements, including like Section 3, which is a federal mandate. When we work with a project that has less than eight units, so we're looking at capping our project at seven units per application, then we do not need to move forward with the Davis-Bacon standards, and so anything eight or more does. And so the state does recommend on these single families, since we have kind of scattered sites, we keep our project scope to seven units in order to stay below that Davis-Bacon Labor Standard requirement. We do have to comply with the National Environmental Protection Act, so NEPA includes ensuring that each site meets the review criteria for environmental standards. That includes the historical preservation, Phase 1. Part of the environmental process is also required as part of the request for release of funding in order to move a project forward. This is very standard with any federal grant. We do this with all of our federal grants that we're working on. And of course, we have to meet all our current building codes and things of that nature as well.
So now to talk to you kind of about what we are specifically thinking. As you are well aware, we have obtained a number of properties through the 657A abandoned building process over the last few years, and we have put together a list of seven, or six, which we own. One, 411 West Main, we do not own, but it is currently a county-held tax certificate based on a lien we placed on the property following the demolition that had to be done as a result of a fire that was ongoing. And so we're looking at, these are, these are all properties that are more alley or corner-based. They are, they have been checked by Michelle for developable... They are, they have been checked by Michelle for developability, and they are all buildable at this point. And so what we would like to propose is moving forward with the project that involves putting modular homes on each of those properties, modular homes being set on a basement specifically as well, because we are prone to win events around here, which we don't want to put anybody into a bad position in. And so with that project, I have gone through and put together some hard costs and some soft costs just to see where this really sits at and is it affordable with the $100,000 grant funds as well as the $25,000 mitigation funds. And so the mitigation activities, those costs I have highlighted in the green on this one and then have included a hard cost contingency of 10%. The application says we cannot include a contingency of greater than, I think, 15%, but that we need to have some contingency in there. And so the idea is that this is going to be providing basically the home and everything you would need, including the garage if it will fit on the site, as well as driveway, sidewalk improvements, and utility connections. As we look at our soft costs, this is where things also get a little interesting. We've got money built in for environmental. We are not recommending that the council would waive building permits on this because that is an outside contractor who is doing inspections at this point, and so there would still be a fee to cover. With the current lots that we are talking about, there'd be no plating or any other requirements. We will have to have architecture and engineering services for each of the sites as well, which will require a procurement process, I believe, on the, depending on whether one firm would be able to do both services or not. I do want to talk about the developer fee in here because there are restrictions to on, you know, thinking about a private entity doing this, that you would include a developer fee to cover sort of your overhead costs related to doing this, and this is standard in what we would see. Typically, I think on most of our, like, low-income housing tax credit projects, which are at a much lower income level than what we're talking about qualifying here, they tend to be, I think you have to be capped at 3.5%.
I think so.
So we've capped this, or we've shown, I'm showing this at 1.5%, so you can see that that would be about $21,000. And then on the next page, I've actually gone through what we would have for non-grant-covered administrative costs, and things match up pretty well. We would need an owner's representative as a construction manager because this is not a position that we currently have on staff that would be able to handle this, so we would be paying for that position, which also means that there is probably less onsite that would have to be done by existing city staff. When we look at the funding sources and we pull in the CDBG grant funds, $20,000 in the mitigation revenue per home, as well as $115,000 for sale revenue, we end up with a profit loss that is basically in the contingency at this point. And so looking at these numbers, I feel pretty good about where they sit and our ability to move forward, knowing that these can be priced at a very affordable level, which we have been concerned about, just because qualifying at those income levels for a $175,000 mortgage would be very difficult. A family of four could have basically $100 worth of debt, which would be a student loan, a car loan, which we think is not a, not an easy number to meet. So the lower we can get the price, the better it is, I think, to get these homes lived in as quickly as possible. And so that is our proposal to you, and we're looking for your permission to spend what will be a lot of hours to actually get a grant application ready and probably come back to you at the end of November, seeking approval to submit that application sometime in December.
I'll answer questions.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
I'm for this program. We've got quite a few lots sitting around that are empty, getting fill-in housing. We've had them up for sale, that type of thing. And sometimes when you, when you put something new in a neighborhood, it helps spark other upgrades and everything else, so I'm in favor of this.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I too echo what Councilman Lottie Hoff said. I strongly believe in infill development. Michelle and I have had several conversations about that. But I have a question. These would all be with basements on these lots, and the ground floor, the ground floor square footage, I'm guessing would be, what, around 750, 800?
No, I think closer to 1,200, probably, is kind of what we've.
I mean, it's going to depend. We'll have to go through a procurement process with, if we get granted, we'll have to go through a procurement process. We're solicit bids from modular home builders across the state, but we're thinking 1,200 to 1,900.
And those will fit with all of our new zoning?
Yep.
Okay. And yeah, I think this is a no-brainer. I'm all for it. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else up here?
I got a question. Jessica and Michelle, could you guys give us some examples of where this type of development has been done before and the success of that? I went for it. I'd just kind of like to make sure that the, I've asked Jessica about the build quality. She's assured me they're still good, but if somebody else has done this, I'd kind of like to see their example.
Yeah, I hope Diana doesn't mind that I pick on her, but Diana was telling me her house is a modular home, and so there are multiple modular home developers across Iowa, and that's where we'll have to do a procurement. But there's Flummer felt that you see on Highway 30 as you're driving by Nevada. The one Diana went with is out of, I think, Esterville, Iowa. There is Homes for Iowa, and so we'll have to solicit to see who comes back at the best price.
That's what I was specifically asking about, where Homes for Iowa, I know that was kind of the target home, so.
Yeah, so Homes for Iowa does have, they've done quite a bit of work in the city of Jefferson, and so that was actually, I did look at what that has assessed at after this home has been built. It has an attached garage. We're not talking about an attached garage for any of these because of the additional environmental requirements that are required to be met, and that that house is assessed at $141,000. And so I would say these are not manufactured. We would not be soliciting for manufactured homes. Modular is very different, and so that's one of the things. I also checked with a local mortgage person as well, is, is there any issue with lending on modular? And she said, no, it's manufactured is where there, there tend to be some things. So I think we're dealing with, well, whatever product we would, we would ultimately come back with as a selection, I think would be of high quality, and it would have to meet very specific environmental and air quality requirements related to the Green Streets criteria.
Other council comments?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So why are we not working with professional builders to get these projects done? Why does the city want to be the contractor over this project? You're assigning grant money to downtown owners of buildings to do their own projects. I actually have three lots, two lots and one in construction that could be meeting all of this, so I actually could take on some of these if you want to give away free money to private individuals.
I guess just to follow up on that. So to be very clear, the city of Marshalltown is proposing our own project, but this funding for both the for-sale side and the rental housing side is available to grant to other projects. They just need to work with Marty at Region 6 to bring forward an application. Ultimately, the city council has to approve all other applications for the rental and for the for-sale housing side. So our project is by no means limiting any other projects from coming forward to apply for the same funding.
Your Honor, if I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
So Jessica, if there was a contractor in town that could meet these requirements and meet the price, could we use one instead of going with modular homes? Will they be allowed to bid on this?
So I did, so no, we would be proposing this and writing the application as modular homes. I did meet with two different developers about stick-built prices and what that would look like, and ultimately, both when they looked at, when they looked at what we were trying to achieve with the sales price, as well with the size of the property and the energy efficiency requirements that we have to meet, they both said, you're not doing this for less than $200 to $250 per square foot as a stick-built home. And so I felt pretty comfortable with verification of those numbers from, from two different places, knowing what we were looking at there. And honestly, the state of Iowa confirmed that for us as well. We asked some questions to them about this. They confirmed that there are some, some projects proposed for the Cedar Rapids area that are also looking at modular homes because that's how you make things in the income range or in the for-sale range to, to really meet the needs for the income qualifying portion of things.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anyone else?
Would you like staff direction, like a motion to proceed?
Yes, we would like a motion to direct staff to bring forward a, an application for this grant funding.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any public comment quickly? Roll call.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
That carried as well. Staff has its direction, and the last discussion item is the derecho stump removal issue.
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. Last year, we had $80,000, and I was going to take out all the stumps, and then we had some ash trees to deal with, and so I didn't get that quite done. This year, we had $120,000, and I was going to take out all the stumps, and we still had 134 ash trees to take down. But I just put out a bid last, or just got bids back last week for 331 stumps to be taken out in the right-of-ways. After that list got done, so the prices were about 125 bucks a tree. That left about 200 stumps on my list. I drove around town. Most of those were on the south side of town, and I would say that, well, 34 of them had been taken out by the homeowner, so my list is now only 100, actually 44. My list is 156 stumps that are left in town on the right-of-way. And so I think I have enough road use tax money to get rid of all those stumps this year. I want to put out a bid for that. So that leaves all the ones that are left in the park, roughly 400 and some in Riverview and 100 and some in some of the other parks. So I don't have any funding source for that, and Chief Tupper goes and asks for money every once in a while, and the CBD does, and Gary's feeling pretty friendly, so I thought it might be a good time to come up and say, I think if you guys gave me up to $75,000, I could wipe out all the stumps in the parks, and if there were any extra money up to that 75, I think I could also remove a lot of the ash trees that are in there that we can't handle ourselves. So I think if we could get all the stumps removed, that would create a huge, beautiful-looking landscape in people's yards and in the parks, and we could start to return to normal.
And for the record, Your Honor, I was bribed with two candy bars as soon as I walked in tonight by Mr. Hubbard.
Were they Snickers or? Don't go there.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
This will take care of the ones at Riverview.
Yes. I think I can get all of them.
Would you suggest local option sales tax for this?
I would suggest local option sales tax. Ultimately, this would typically come out of the general fund. We've just got too much pressure on the general fund at this point, so I think this is the most available funding source for this.
Okay, well, while Gary's sticking a crowbar in his wallet, I'll, I'd make the motion that we go ahead and fund $75,000 out of local option sales tax and get rid of all those stumps, especially on the south side down there and then at Riverview, so.
I'll gladly second.
Any other discussion up here?
Yes. I don't know if we should cap it, just in case Jeff's been drinking what I've been drinking tonight, and his number's too low. Maybe we need to increase that so he doesn't come back to us for five more thousand or something. I mean, how confident are you, Jeff?
Well, that's just that I, you know, so the south side of Riverview, all those stumps are gone from the contractor. We've taken down maybe 20 or 30 ourselves in some of the smaller parks, but I didn't, I spent all day Friday driving around looking at the ones on the right-of-way. I didn't have a chance to get to all the ones in parks, but we were going to go do that. I can, I can have a better number for you. And both, the contract will probably go out for a greater amount than what the city administrator can approve, so it's going to come to you guys as a contract approval anyway. I don't know that.
As, as a reminder, you have to approve use of council-designated local option sales tax by resolution, so I think Jeff's estimate is a good one to work off of now, but ultimately we are talking about a range that will come back to you to authorize a contract.
And we can amend that at that time, right? Correct? So when he comes back with one?
Yes, we'll probably do a resolution on November 14th if you would vote, if you, a majority of you vote for this, to designate the local option sales tax so that we can move forward and then make any changes along the way as needed when we have actual bids.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Jeff, can you give us an idea of how many ash trees are still in the parks? Because you talked about maybe excess funds being applied to that.
Yeah, so, and I don't have a total count on that as well. I just know, we did take down, Top Notch came in and took down all the ones in Kiwanis and Riverview, or Anson, and took all the stumps out as well, so that's kind of changed our numbers. I know that there are probably 40 in Riverview, but I'm not sure about some of the other parks. And some of them we can take down if they're not near power lines or really big, and we would be doing that in the off-season. So we're looking at more of just the bigger ones that we can't handle or ones that are near structures and things that we don't want to risk damaging ourselves. I can have those numbers to come back with a resolution, I think, by the 14th, and then, and then I know what the recent ash tree bids were, just came in at, and what the stump removals are, so I, that's what my plan was to do this week, probably Wednesday or Thursday, is to go around all the parks and get those counts.
Yeah, I would be in favor of addressing those at this time, too. I mean, this is two-plus years in the making. The sooner we can get on it, the better for everybody.
Well, a year afterwards, I was doing the math in my head and was going to be, people were calling about their stumps, and I said it could be four to five, six years before we get to it, so if we could wipe it out in 2024, that's huge.
The two saddest things driving around town are lacking the canopies and how fast they all dropped their leaves this year, and the stumps that are still ugly and in the, in the terrace, truly. Anybody else wish to come out up here? We do have a motion and a second, right? Let's call the roll and see what happens.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. That carried, staff has its direction. On to public comment, and I have to speed read this. Members of the public may make comments on any items not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize more. Direct your comments to the mayor council as a whole, and the mayor and councilor may not engage in discussion or debate on these items raised by the members of the public because we might violate the open meetings laws. With that said, is anybody wishing to approach the microphone and make any public comment tonight?
John Patterson, 921 South 10th Avenue. I'm also the owner-operator of J and M Fabrication here in Marsh Town. I'm here tonight for two things. One, it's a public safety concern, and the other one is just to make a comment. So the last time I stood up here, I wasn't in front of so many of you. A little bit of my background, and please work with me if I go over three minutes. My history in what we do goes back years and years and years, I'd probably say over 20 years of experience in the metal industry. I like to call myself a professional. I think I've gained the trust of the community, and that's why a few of them have reached out to me. Normally, I would just pick up a phone call, try to get ahold of somebody about my concerns. Yesterday, I received a seventh phone call from somebody here in the town about a concern about the culverts that went in on Nevada, Marshall, and Boone Street just south of Lenox. I took some pictures, and this was, I took these yesterday afternoon. I can give them to you guys, you can look over them. There's handrail that's around each culvert. This handrail. This handrail, in my opinion, is not safe for the public. There are four posts that aren't even connected to concrete. They're just hanging there. The base plates that they are anchored into the concrete with, someone took a grinder, just ground them off, didn't clean up the sharp edges, nothing. There are sharp edges hanging off the concrete. If a young child were to walk past any one of those, trip and fall, put their hand on it, I can promise you, that's going to be an ER trip with many stitches. I cut myself enough in my own shop in the industry that I do. It, it's just a, it's a huge safety concern. There is also a couple other of the areas that the handrails are not installed properly. The reason why I know this is I am a certified welder. I am also a certified welding educator. This is what I do for a living. When you mount a four-bolt post to a concrete, all four bolts have to be in the concrete. And there's a couple of them. One bolt on a piece of angle iron drove into the concrete. And in, in these pictures, you can all see them. When community members reach out to me, the best thing I can do is tell them, make a phone call to the city. But when this many people had called me, I decided to go out, take a look at it for myself. I've never had that many people call me. Again, normally, I would make a phone call to the city, but I think this is a big enough concern, I need to bring it to you. Especially with a lot of the growth that's going on in Marsh Town, which is great. I, I'm behind the city 110% on, on growth and making our city just that much more beautiful. It's, the more and more we bring contractors in, and this is just my opinion, the more and more we bring contractors in, the more and more stuff that gets done. But who is there to oversee their work? Now, I don't know if this was a local contractor. I don't need to know. I don't know if this is an outside contractor. All I'm saying is the work that was done on, on those areas, that is by far the worst I have ever seen yet. I've been in business here in Marsh Town for just over three years. I, me personally, I would never let this go. My, my employees would never walk off the job site with anything that looks like that. The handrails that are hanging off the edges, they should have been shortened onsite, rewelded, and anchored the proper way. The sharp edges, stuff like that, almost every base plate has sharp steel slivers everywhere. There is not one area that is safe about any of that hand railing. That's where I wanted to bring to you guys' attention as far as that, my, my comments. I kind of already broke into it. I'm excited to see Marsh Town come back. I lived here my entire life. And when tornado came through, the duratio came through, the face of our town has really changed. You know, I, I think I can speak for a lot of local businesses and myself. We're all excited to help. Don't forget about us, okay? I've been in business for three years, and I have yet to hear from the city. I have never done a project for the city yet today. I have never had the opportunity to bid. I have never even been addressed. I like to think, like I said, I like to think I'm a professional. I specialize in metal arts, sculptures, structural steel. I happen to know this for a fact, I am the only structurally certified welder in a 20-mile radius. And I have yet to be used. My, my shop is on the outskirts of town. I'm out there on Iowa Avenue Governor Road, but, you know, don't forget about us local guys, whether it be Central Iron Machine, Nelson's, J&amp;M Fabrication. You know, a lot of us metal guys, we're here to help. We want to help. We want to be a part of our community. With that being said, I want to thank you all for your time. Thanks for listening to me.
Thanks, John. And thank you for the invitation to go out to your plant three years ago to check it out. You've made a significant improvement on that corner from what it had been. You really cleaned it up nicely, and I've seen the work you do in, in the shop there, and it's excellent. Thank you. Okay. The microphone's still open for public comment?
Good evening, everybody. You might remember me from back in April. I came by, again, I didn't even know that Marshalltown, Iowa existed.
I'm sorry, I need to get your name and address.
Sorry, Monica Guzman, Los Angeles, California. And I discovered Marshalltown through baseball history. Your most famous son is Cap Anson, Henry Anson's son, the founder of your town, thus making you one of the historic towns in the Midwest. I homeschool my son, and we just got back from a three-month trek on the East Coast, specifically visiting the historic sites so that he could see American history firsthand as opposed to just reading about it in textbooks. I can tell you that people don't go to Boston to see a new bridge, some art sculpture that was designed two years ago. They specifically go to see the historical sites. They're very into Paul Revere over there. We were in Philadelphia, Ben Franklin Town. Again, I mean, sure, people go to Philadelphia to see the Rocky Stairs, and we did that, too. And then obviously, New York is the capital with Broadway entertainment fashion. 9/11, we saw that site, too. So I don't know how much research you guys do on cities that are doing what you're attempting to do. Sacramento, California sang the same song around 2019. They've been trying to reconstruct K Street, Main Street, and it was an epic failure, basically. So I'm really curious what that little town is that is spending, that has a lower population but is spending what you guys, they want you to spend. I'm really curious what that town name is, because I like to research it for myself. But in the meantime, I would encourage you guys to look at Sacramento, California. Instead of improving K Street, they have more crime, more open-air drug use. It's not safe. They've added a lot of bars, a lot of nightclubs, and all that's done is bringing shootings. You can't even go to the Capitol Park anymore toward the evening hours. A lot of stuff is happening, and obviously, the homeless rate in Sacramento and across California is off the charts. So thank you again for allowing me to speak. I mean, we'll see, we'll see how this turns out for you if you turn out to be another Sacramento, California, or if you can truly succeed the way that small town is succeeding. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to address? Okay. At this time, we need to go into a closed session. And so, thank you for coming. We need, we do need that motion. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'd make the motion to go to closed session, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Hoop? This is on the motion to go into closed session. Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
That carried, we will go into closed session.